Call our meeting to the record. This is a regular meeting of the Maranville Council, the Board of Seaside Park, and the County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, advertised to begin at the conclusion of the work session meeting which has just now ended. Pursued to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Means Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting for publication in the Asper Park Press and the Ocean Star on January 3rd, 2025. Notice of this meeting of the governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Emmelfield?
Here.
Councilmember Condos?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Here.
Council President Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Thank you.
If we could now all rise together for a moment of silence to be filed by our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for April 14th, 2025, a work session, April 14th, 2025, a regular meeting. Is there a motion or comments?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Maranville, second by Council President Wilk. Roll call?
Councilmember Emmelfield?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And next on the agenda is a motion for approval of the special meeting minutes. Those are the minutes for April 14th, 2025, an executive session. Any comments or if not, a motion?
I'll make that motion, Larry. Second.
Motion by Council President Wilk, second by Councilmember Croft. Roll call?
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmelfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Abstaining.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The next two items on the agenda are special items, and for those two special items, we welcome a number of distinguished guests here tonight, and it's always a risk when you begin to recognize guests because you forget someone. That being said, the two resolutions are, of course, that of appointing our new Chief of Police, Brian McKay, and secondly, we have a resolution on the agenda authorizing the promotion of Michael Confederac from Sergeant to Lieutenant. And obviously, as we can see by looking around us, law enforcement is always a joint and cooperative endeavor, and it requires not just a chain of command from the top, not just the federal level, but the state level through the county and otherwise, but it also involves a cooperative, joint enterprise with sharing of efforts to protect the community, for the safety of the community, and that includes neighboring communities as well and their representatives, and I see a number of them here in the audience this evening, and we certainly welcome all of them for a very happy occasion, and obviously, we welcome and recognize and give great thanks to Seaside Park's own Police Department, whose members are here this evening as well. And included in the special guests, and I may ask momentarily, two of our very distinguished individuals here this evening to perhaps say a few words as to joint law enforcement and offering their congratulations and support to the new chief as well as the new lieutenant. But obviously, first and foremost, is our chief law enforcement officer for Ocean County, our distinguished prosecutor Brad Bellheimer, who is here in attendance with us. We welcome, along with the Ocean County Chief of Detectives, Chief Carrington is here as well. We welcome him, and we thank them for all their ongoing service for the county, for the state, and for each and every one of us. And we also recognize and thank our distinguished Ocean County Sheriff, who's here with us, Mike Masternardi, and we thank him for coming. We thank him for all his efforts, and those are many, on behalf of law enforcement and on behalf of communities here, including Seaside Park, for everything that he does for each and every one of us. And included among the special guests as well, we recognize Chief Ellis from Manchester Township, Chief La Cicerole from Alberap, Chief Santucci from Berkeley Township, and of course, we recognize our neighboring chief, who also has done so much for Seaside Park and our community, and that is Seaside Heights Chief Tommy Boyd, who's here. Among, and standing next to him, of course, is one of our many former distinguished chiefs of the Seaside Park Police Department, and that is former Chief Ed Dixon. And we welcome him, and we welcome, as I indicate, I'm sure that I have neglected someone out there of stature, and I apologize if so, but obviously, this is a joint ceremony, and it's one of celebration and thanks and joint effort for each and every one of us, for our safety and for our communities here in Ocean County. So before, as a formal note of business, I would consider a resolution from the council for the promotion of Brian McKay, the Chief of Police, and also for the promotion of Michael Confederac?
So moved.
From Sergeant to Lieutenant.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Rotunda?
I'll second it, Mayor.
And a second by Councilmember Connor. Roll call?
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Emmelfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Abstaining.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And now, it will be my pleasure first to administer the oath above us to our new chief, Brian McKay. Welcome up. And obviously, for a moment like this, this is a family occasion, and not just family neighbors, but those in the immediate family, we thank everyone. If you could repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I, Brian McKay.
I, Brian McKay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of Chief of Police.
Of Chief of Police.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And now, before we hear a few words from our new chief, and also from our prosecutor and our sheriff, I'm going to ask if newly-to-be-maid Lieutenant Confederac could come forward, someone else who's served in law enforcement for the borough of Seaside Park, and of course, for the county and the state for many, many years, a good friend of Seaside Park. Raise your right hand. I, Michael Confederac.
I, Michael Confederac.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of Seaside Park Police Lieutenant.
Of Seaside Park Police Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Lieutenant? And if we, I'll turn the floor over to our new chief, and Mike's being shot, so he's walking up.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. I'm kind of overwhelmed and so humbled to see so many people here. First and foremost, I want to thank my God, for without Him, none of this is possible. And I thank Mayor Peterson and the council for having faith in me to do this job, and I, hopefully, I will accomplish and take your faith and do my best ability. You're part of 30 years of law enforcement. There's so many people that have helped me get to where I'm at, so many people have mentored me and been at my side. I want to thank my wife, Erica. She's been a cop's wife for 30 years. That says something about her character. She's always been my common rock place when I go home, whenever things are bad, and there's nobody whose opinion I value more than her. I want to thank my children, who never complain, missing holidays, missing birthdays. I'm so proud of you guys. My mom, who's born and raised in Seaside Park, you have taught me to work hard. You taught me my faith, you taught me everything, and I'm so thankful. You taught me to love this town, and you taught me that. I want to thank Prosecutor Bellheimer, who I've now known for well over 20 years, and always you have a big smile and an open hand, you always stop to talk to me, and you never deny that, and I'm so thankful for you in Ocean County, is very lucky to have you as the prosecutor. Chief Detectives Carrington, same thing, you always have the enormous smile and a big handshake, and you always greet me with a big hug. I'm so thankful for that. Chief Boyd literally has an open door for me. He's always let me walk in his building, he's always helped me, and one of the biggest things is I love that our talks on the history of Seaside, and I love doing that. Sheriff Masternardi, you've always opened your door for me, you've always assisted me in this town, and I'm so thankful for that. Some other people, I'm sorry if I'm getting a little long-winded. Captain Mary Nelson from Jackson, she was the last person that I trained in Ware Town. To see her now, her husband's retired Sergeant Jimmy Kinlin, I also worked with him in Ware Town, that you trusted me with your son to be a Class II here, and he's now a full-time officer in Jackson, and I thank you for that. Sergeant Pete LaRosa from Lakewood, who every Sunday, you're willing to listen to me and answer my questions, and you are my brother in faith, and I thank you for that. And you have the County Chiefs of Police Association, you guys have reached out to me, you've been so helpful for me, and I'm looking, we're looking forward to working with you guys. And my first boss in Ware Town, Robert Campenile, who taught me how to be a police officer, and I'm forever grateful for that. You know, all my officers, I am so thankful for your support, to see every one of you here, it means a lot to me. It shows your dedication, and my promise and pledge to you is to always support you, have your back, and to give you every resource you can to serve and do your job well. And finally, just the people of Seaside Park, I love this town, you guys have always embraced this police department, that has always been one of the greatest things that this department has, you guys embrace us, you always loved us, and I'm very thankful for that. So I'll shut it down now. Thank you, if I've missed anybody, I apologize, but thank you all for coming out.
And certainly, as I indicated earlier, law enforcement, keeping us safe is a joint cooperative effort, there's a chain of command, and there's cooperation at all levels, and I want to turn the floor over, if you would say a few words, we have our county prosecutor, the Honorable Brad Bellheimer, who's here with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We spoke for about 10 minutes before the ceremony, didn't mention any part about me speaking. Just for that, I might just yield my time to Chief Boyd. I would like to say, as the mayor said, law enforcement here in Ocean County is a collaborative effort, and we work so well together, and we look forward to working with Chief McKay. I want to congratulate you, like you said, we have known each other for a long time, and I'm proud to be here and to see you get promoted to chief. I'm also happy for Lieutenant Confederac, we've known each other a long time, I'm happy that I got to be here for you as well. I look forward to working with both of you, your department, anything you need from us, you know you have our support. I'd like to thank all the chiefs that are here as well, and I encourage you to be involved in the Chiefs Association, I think that would be good for everybody. So thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, congratulations on your choices, you did a nice job here, I'm very proud to be here, thank you.
We also welcome here this evening another very distinguished guest and public servant, our Ocean County Sheriff, Mike Masternardi.
Thank you, Mayor. You're the mayor and the council, I'm making a chief of police, we think that's very important, almost as important, the chiefs that are here, I can assure you that the 180 officers in the sheriff's office are here to assist your town, whatever you need, the chiefs will tell you, whatever a chief wants, say chief what? Get. I get a lot. The reason I'm here is somebody had to drive Chief Boyd. Prosecutor, say, congratulations, Erica. Lieutenant, congratulations you, and congratulations to your families. It's probably the best day and the worst day of your life all at once, we've been doing it for a couple of years now, and I will say, it's a good, a good run, you have a great department here, keep up the great work, move it forward, and we're here to support you anywhere we can, congratulations to Seaside Park. Thank you.
And I know we have lots of celebrating bells out there, and thanking, wishing our new chief and our new lieutenant all the best, and obviously, I can't recognize for speaking all of our chiefs, but as long as it keeps it short, we could call on our neighboring chief, if he wants to say a word or two, certainly, we're welcome. Chief Tommy Boyd?
I think you made a great pick, Mr. Mayor and council, I've known this kid for a long time. Seaside Park is a special town, it's a beautiful place, it's an entree, everybody wants to come here, you know, we know that, and I'm just happy that you have, you picked a Chief of Police, you know, director, and, you know, we're lucky, we got this guy here, because I hang on him like a ticking hound dog's ear. So when we have problems, he's here, they're there, we all help each other, so as you know, Seaside is very, very busy, and it's not easy, but you gotta have, the neighboring towns have to help you too, so. We're just lucky, and in today's world, it's a lot different, I'm in my 41st year as law enforcement, it's crazy, right? It's not the same. Everything you do is on video, everything is a cam, everything, everybody, you get out of the car, everybody has a phone up, everybody wants to take a picture, everybody wants to videotape it, and guess what? You gotta love it. It's not like the old days, so, you know, if you don't, it's like the dinosaurs, if you don't, if you don't adapt, you're gonna not be here. So I think we're gonna do good in Seaside, I think we can do great in Seaside Park, I think it was a great pick, and we're very happy, you got a great attorney, Mrs. Zabarski is sitting there. He's been scatting me many times out of lawsuits, so everything's all good, and thank you for allowing us to come here and share your experience.
I certainly don't want a Lieutenant Confederac that wishes to, I'd say if he would, I don't want him shortchanged in any way, but he's.
I just want to say thank you to the mayor and council for, you know, choosing me and everything, and my wife for being here, my family, as Brian McKay said, chief of the gay, about his family, they are my rock, my family, they're my shawl mold, so I'm just very appreciative that you've given that, I feel honored that I just hid this position, and thank you, and carry on, so, thank you very much.
We all share the sentiments, we have a terrific police department, a lot of dedicated men and women, and that tradition goes back many, many years, and I was honored to be a member of it quite a few decades back, so I can share my thoughts and love of the department, and that department that inter revolves our town and works for our town. I thank each and every member of the police department, many of whom are here this evening, and I certainly thank all of them, and I thank as well Lieutenant Fitzgerald, who's been serving as the officer in charge for the last weeks and months, for his dedication as well, and I thank all of the team of lieutenants, sergeants, and down to each and every one, and those that are starting out in the ladder, the class ones, who are receiving some excellent training under the auspices through the sheriff's department, through the prosecutor's department, through our own police department, and I'm glad to have each and every one of you dedicated to careers in law enforcement, and thank you for your service, and of course, to those police officers who are out there each and every day protecting us and serving us. So thank everyone, and thank you all for coming here this evening. And obviously, this being a regular meeting, we certainly would understand, I know especially our law enforcement community has a lot of other special obligations ongoing and commitments for this evening, so we would not be attended if those of you need to depart, and some of the families and friends obviously have some celebrating to do, and that's certainly understandable and welcome as well, as the town governing body proceeds with the ordinary business of this meeting. So thank you all for coming out this evening. Our mics are back on, and the next item of business is final reading and adoption, it's ordered, it's 2025-06, that amended Chapter 135, Article 1, Section 135.7 of the Code of the Bay of Seaside Park, entitled "Permits or Cauterous Use of Beach Roads." And this came about through research ongoing for a considerable period of time from the committee, and as referenced on the record at the first reading, these particular fees had never been modified, increased, or otherwise for, I think it goes back to?
2010.
2010.
March 25th.
So this addresses that situation with what the recommendation is, is a equitable and fair imposition. and fair imposition of the fees. Any other comments from council members on this particular second reading?
No.
Hearing none, we'll go into the audience. This is a second reading and a hearing, ordinance 2025-06. If anyone has any comments, if they could give their name and address into the record. Hearing none, I would close the public hearing and I'd entertain a motion from the council.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Condos.
Second.
Second by...
Tom.
It's no question.
Councilmember Condos, snake does the roll call.
I go, sir, runner.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And next is final reading and adoption, ordinance 2025-07, amending Section 200 of the Code of the Bay of Seaside Park entitled "Development Regulations to Permit a One-Year Extension of Variances Under Section 200-16D." And that brings our ordinance in conformity with the Municipal Land Use Act. Also, this is in accordance with recommendations from our planning board and commensurate with the procedures in, uh, other municipalities as well. Any other questions, comments on this? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience. Any public comments on final reading, adoption, ordinance 2025-07? And here, seeing none, I will close the public portion and I'd entertain a motion for final reading, 2025-07.
I'll make it.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And next, final reading and adoption, ordinance 2025-08, amending the Bay of Seaside Park so as to amend Chapter 62 entitled "Police Department." And that particular ordinance has per discussion in previous meetings allows for, uh, appointment that the council were so inclined, uh, for the captain's position, uh, in the police department as well. Any, uh, questions, comments from council? If not, we'll go into the audience for a second final reading, adoption, ordinance 25-09. Any...
08. 08, 24. 08.
08, I apologize. And hearing none, I will, uh, close the public portion and I'd entertain a motion on second reading, 2025-08.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Annefield?
Second.
And second by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Jerry.
Oh, it was Jerry, I apologize. Second by Councilmember Rotunda, roll call.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And the next is final reading, adoption, ordinance 2025-09, amending and supplementing an ordinance of the Bay of Seaside Park fixing and determining salaries and wages of certain officials and employees. And this came about through a great deal of research, uh, through the committee, our administrator and the staff. And in particular, this brings into conformity, uh, some of the changes with the state statute that, uh, had increased the minimum wage in New Jersey. And this makes sure that we're in conformity with all positions, uh, so that they are not below the minimum wage is the primary reason. And it also addresses some other cleanup discrepancies, et cetera. Any other comments from council on this?
I'd just like to make one comment on it because I think we read it the first time. There were some questions after the fact, but I think that, to your point, that there's been researched on and looking at other towns and also based on collective bargaining agreements. But one of my strong feelings about this as part of the personnel committee is that we want to attract and not only attract people to work here, but really to retain people to work here because it costs the borough significant resources every time someone leaves. And then you have to re-advertise and re-hire and re-train. So, I think it's important that we are paying something that people want to work here and want to stay here.
Well said. And any other council comments? If not, we'll go into the audience if there are any public comments on final reading, ordinance 2025-09. And hearing none, I would close the public portion and I would entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Condos?
I'll second it, ma'am.
Second by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And the next is final reading and adoption, ordinance 2025-10, amending Section 293.6 of the Code of the Bay of Seaside Park entitled "Bolt Slip Rental Permits to Mend the Waitlist Procedure for the Marina." And this too came about through, uh, identifying a potential problem of area needing to be addressed and the research from the committee, uh, to make that procedure fair, uh, more equitable, if that's the right term. And I don't know if, uh, the committee wants to put any more input on that. Hearing none.
On the boat slip?
Yes, and the boat slip issue?
Um, the fee hasn't gone up in quite some time and the, 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 the committee looked at it and felt that it was warranted for an increase at this point.
Any other comments? If not, we'll go into the audience if there are any...
What do you ask about the Marina?
Well, this is, uh, more focused on the, uh, the, the, to making sure the slip, uh, is alternating between...
I understand, I just...
Yeah.
I understand. Yes, well, I think that was the committee that, that...
Yeah, but they brought up both of these issues and...
No, I, I, I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm still a pretty dear man.
And anything else from council then on second reading, 2025-10? Hearing none, I'll go into the audience if there are any public comments on final reading, 2025-10. Hearing none, I'll close the public portion and I'd entertain a motion from council.
I'll make the motion, ma'am.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft, second by Council President Wilk, roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And next on the agenda are first two entitled, uh, resolutions that must be passed prior to the actual, uh, consideration at the public hearing of the budget itself. 2025-167 is authorizing the municipal budget to be read by title only at the public hearing about to be conducted, and that in conjunction with standard procedure, uh, throughout the state, as well as past procedure over the years in this town and others. Any questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion, ma'am.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And the next, uh, resolution related to the budget as well, and that is 2025-168. It's authorizing us to refer to a self-examination of the budget for 2025. And that is a procedure whereby budgets are able to be approved in New Jersey. And I was in Seaside Park, uh, went through the process, I believe it was last year.
Last year.
And that entailed significant delays, but ultimately, uh, approval process by the state of New Jersey. And as such, this year's budget, uh, involves what's referred to as self-examination through the municipality and its professionals itself. Anything else, Jenna, on the record?
Nope, you covered it.
Okay. Anything from council? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second.
And second by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And next on the agenda is the public hearing on the municipal budget and the adoption of the 2025 municipal budget. And this budget is subject to an informational hearing which occurred back on the second meeting of March as to the various wrong items, as to the basis of the review process, those wrong items in the capital expense, operating revenues, and whether operating expenses rather, and anticipated revenues. And I don't know if we made any more summary from, I know a great deal of work went into the budget, uh, through the committee, uh, as well as through our professionals and that included, but was not limited to our prior CFO and our current CFO, uh, all who contributed greatly to the finished product. And obviously, uh, no one up here, as we're all taxpayers, uh, no one is ever happy with a increase, uh, in taxes, albeit it's a modest one. But, uh, that increase has been scrutinized thoroughly as to what items, uh, might be considered to be eliminated. Uh, and there are a lot of very necessary, appropriate expenditures that simply cannot be put off any longer. And those obviously include, but are not limited to, uh, an urgently necessary firetruck and the capital expenses. We're moving ahead on the Boardwalk project, uh, which, uh, and other items that are absolutely necessary to, to consider and to move forward on. So, I don't know if, uh, council, anyone has anything further?
Also moving out on the parking lot improvements as well.
Yes.
Which is another important safety that we're doing.
Very much so, yeah.
Anything further from council then? If not, I will go into the audience for this, uh, public hearing on the 2025 budget. If anyone has any comments, uh, if they could give their name and address into the record.
Amy Klein, 4811 Avenue. Um, I'm looking at this particular sheet, but it doesn't give what the, um, change is for considering this new budget. What's the amount, what's the amount of the tax increases? I guess we put a...
4.4 cents. For $100, I'd be glad to.
And, um, since we don't have, at least not right now in our possession, the, um, itemized budget from when it was presented at, I guess it was the March meeting, has anything been taken out of the budget in an effort to reduce the tax impact?
Nothing, no.
So, it's basically, it's the same?
Has not changed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the 2025 municipal budget? Hearing none, I would close the, uh, public hearing and I'd entertain a motion from the council.
Show move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Rotunda?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kraft, roll call.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
The next item on the agenda are the payment of claims, 225-169. It's approving the payment of the itemized claims set forth on the check registry boat list for the time period April 15th to May 1st, 2025. Any comments or questions from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Second. I'll make that motion, Bill, second.
Okay, motion by Council President Wilk, seconded by Councilmember Kraft, roll call.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
Next are the resolutions, uh, read in summary fashion. 170, authorizing the advertisement and receipt of bids for Seaside Park Marina Breakwater improvements. 171, authorizing the solicitation of bids for the lease for antenna attachment on the municipal water tower and ground space for ancillary support equipment located at Block 50, Block 5 rather, Lot 17. 171, authorizing the execution of change order number 1 to the contract between the Bay of Seaside Park and PNA Construction for a decrease in the amount of $225,018.43. 173, establishing fees for persons to utilize the public boat ramp located at 13th Avenue. 174, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Control. 175, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Patrol. 176, appointing seasonal pump-out boat operators for the 2025 summer season. 177, appointing Class Ones Special Law Enforcement Officers for the calendar year 2025. 178, authorizing the designated adjustment and/or refund on water sewer utility accounts. 179, authorizing the designated miscellaneous refund for farmers' market fees. 180, authorizing the Bay of Seaside Park to enter into a lease purchase agreement with tax-exempt leasing corp. 181, authorizing execution of a letter of intent to purchase a ladder truck from Absolute Fire Protection Sourcewell Contract Number 1132-RVG-1. 182, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation fiscal year 2025 Pump-Out Boat Program. 183, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation 2025 Local Recreation Improvement Grant. 184, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriations Recycling Tenage Grant. 185, calling for the restoration of energy taxes to municipalities by the state of New Jersey in its budget. 186, authorizing and providing for the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquired, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its water utility system for Phase 3A Water Main and Phase 3B Water Main Project. Any questions, comments from council on any of the particular resolutions? Or any further background?
No.
If not, we'll go into the audience if there's any public comments on any of the resolutions. We allow such comments even though not required by law. If anyone has any, if they could give their name and address into the record. Seeing none, I would close the public portion and I would entertain from council a consent agenda, a motion for approval of the resolutions.
Make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Condos?
I'll second it, ma'am.
Second by Council President Wilk, roll call.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Annefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
No shared fruit?
And item 12 is, uh, an announcement. And before I make that, that announcement being, uh, moving up a long-term alternate member of the planning board, Michael Brosnan, to fulfill the unexpired term as a Class Four member. And, uh, that duty naturally is a somewhat sad one, though we thank him very much for all his years of service, as Michael Brosnan has been an alternate for many, many years. Uh, and the reason, and I know everyone in the Seaside Park governing body, the planning board, past and present, as well as the entire community, uh, offers our sympathy to, uh, the late Tony DiCarlo's wife, Lilian, to his family, uh, he was very, very proud, in particular, one recent granddaughter. I recall this winter him conversing with me as she, uh, passed the bar exam of foreign colors in three different states at once. So, certainly, he was rightfully very proud. But, uh, Tony DiCarlo passed away, uh, and unfortunately, it was all a private ceremony. And none of us in the town, uh, even his neighbors, close friends, realized that it was a private ceremony. Uh, he passed back on April 10th. And, uh, he's recognized as one of the very longest, if not the longest-serving members. Uh, he served on our Zone Board of Adjustment for... He's served on our zoning board of adjustment for many, many years, decades in fact, and then the planning board. So he's a very fine contributing member of the community, and we extend our deepest sympathies to his family. That concludes that particular announcement and our offering of sympathies. Anyone else on the council have anything further at this juncture?
I have one thing further.
Yes.
Edie, I just double-checked and our, the amount to be raised by taxation for municipal purposes has increased by $992 since the introduction. The amount of appropriations did not change. Just that number changed, probably due to the reduction in, I don't know exactly the number, it could be, not sure exactly which number, some number that can be watched yet.
Grants received after.
Yes, I got my report?
Yes, Council President Wilk.
Stocked Avenue work for wave ray improvements, old drainage work and concrete work is complete. Oil drag work will start Monday at the latest, and last three or four days, the project will be substantially complete with permitting by 5:00. New drainage project, oil drainage work is complete, concrete sidewalks replaced, replaced base complete, expestor installed, and new returning well is expected to be completed by Tuesday, 4/29. Well, after the inferior work, including entry of, entry of mixing grid will start, workers to be on target to be completed by 5:00. The 14th Avenue shore stabilization project that was started on the Wednesday, and I believe it is complete, it looks complete, but I'm not sure if it's complete, I was there today. I have to say, I was there prior to the start of the project, the tree, the pine tree that was on the edge of the river, the Bay of Crew running, they did a fantastic job, they removed the tree, kept tree, and re-located it to a safer location, hopefully it will take. I think, just as a suggestion, I think we should plant another pine tree in that same location in tow, with the ground settled a little bit. So my suggestion, I think that would be nice to reflect on back there. I think the roots will go down into the ground, into those rocks, and I think it would be very secure. If anyone has the opportunity to look at, look at that area, I really think it came out very nice. I did have the opportunity when I was there with the Bay of Crew, I did speak to Eric on other areas of interest that I like to see addressed, and we hope to talk about that at a later date. That is a really nice area down there, and I think it needs a little squeaking, but we'll talk about that at a later date. Nothing crazy, just, just make it a little nicer. Being where you, storm drainage work, including additional piping for the future pump station is complete, the contractors now working on concrete curves and sidewalks between 9th Avenue and 14th Avenue. That work will continue until 5/23, and the old drainage work will be complete by 6/6. Internal projects, work began on Monday, reverse the front porch, where it was at the Bay Hall, and the steps, faded non-beach entrance signs have been replaced, opening of the, the opening of the rain fence around K Street, so that residents can walk through the rain to get parked cars on Central Avenue during flooding. And the water department will begin hydrant pushing next week. But I think that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Next one. Yes. Just want to add something.
Oh, the number one for the parking stores has begun today on Ocean Avenue, I believe it's on at the north end, my book? Yeah, I see them, they're way over.
So you have a, wait, take that, it'll be done.
It shouldn't take too long, I mean, they got it locked down today, so.
Okay. Just general dates, probably.
Yeah, probably. Depending on the weather.
Yeah, of course.
And Councilmember Connor?
I just wanted to mention that Councilmember Wilk had mentioned the signs at the streets where the street entrance to the boardwalk, not the beach entrances. You know, every street has one, some didn't. And a lot of those signs, you couldn't even read them or anything else like that. Couple of them are missing in some of the streets. So. Everywhere a sign. I just want to thank, yeah, to your signs, yeah. Sign everywhere, so. Well, we have a lot of these streets. So anyway, I just wanted, they look very nice, you can read them, they look nice. I want to thank Karen and Eric and his crew and Steve for putting them up. In some cases, they were missing, you know, they had to put a, you know, post in, put it up, but they all look very nice and they're there, so it looks good. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Connor.
Thank you.
Anything else from council?
I just wanted to thank Karen and you, Mr. Mayor, for shaking the tree to get the county to get Ocean Avenue done so quickly. It was great, and it was done a lot quicker than we anticipated. Very good.
We had our meeting and I was told we were quite forceful. Our administrator was there, our council president was there, I was there, Josh and Eric, Bill, we had a teamed up on them.
I'm called every couple of days to the county engineer.
And, yeah, they were, within a couple of days, they started, so.
I just have one thing, Mayor, I just want to let everyone know, in-person beach bath sales started today at the bath house, and they'll be open every day between 10:00 and 4:00.
Very good. Anything else from council or government? If not, we'll go into the audience if there's any public comments, if anyone has them, if they could give their name and address into the record. And Edie?
It's too soon for the condition.
We'll call those gifts out.
Edie, 48 11th Avenue. Thank you again, President Wilk, for your report. And it's really great to hear that some of the projects that have been hanging around and hanging around are getting done. And I think that's, that's wonderful. Progress is a, is a wonderful thing, and when things come to completion. And I do realize they had started numbering the spots, because we were talking today, a bunch of us, that if you park in an unmarked spot for many hours, you could have free parking, but that's not going to last very long, so. It's nice to see that done. I wrote down Ocean Avenue on that part, and it's, it's always nice for bike riding.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody, for your work.
Thanks, Edie.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, yes, Chuck?
I thought Shirley Kreutzle got Central, I mean, Ocean Avenue, Dawn Quick, she mentioned something.
Name and address?
Chuck Appleby, 215 10th Avenue. The, the cell towers, you're going to be renegotiating cell tower stuff. I had to do that in the past. I would recommend having contracts, I think, are going out for cell towers. They do a assessment on the wattage and everything when they do these cell towers. And a lot of times now, you'll just re-up the contract, but what you could do is have them redo that. So they keep adding things as they have these contracts, but they never redo the environment or the humid impact status to the people that live around there. So you can have them do that when they redo the contract, so they have to do that study. A lot of times, they just do it on paper, but then you can have them go out there and do readings. It's really something good to do because they keep adding antennas and changing them over the years, and you never get a holistic, you know, actual assessment of the impacts. So it's something you can do at the time of writing. You should do it every time they make a change, but they try to say that it's not a significant change, so they really don't have to do it because it costs that money. But they will do it, so it's a good thing to have because you really shouldn't be impacting neighbors, you know, because these things do get carried away, you know? The other thing was, I paid for my trailer storage down at the Marina. I think it's a base price for everybody. I don't know if there's.
I don't know, I've paid it, but.
I don't think there's a discount for residents.
No.
So my thing is, and I've said this before, I initiated that when they started doing the trailers storage down there. And it was to get trailers out of people's driveways, so then they have parking at the houses, so try to help out parking around there. So prioritizing local seaside park residents to be able to store their trailers there. I know it's been, a lot of people utilize that yard for trailer storage, it's really, I think, filled up by the end of the summer. So trying to have more locals using it, maybe you can charge more for out-of-towners or prioritize the people that are in town. I don't know if you can do that or not, but the object is to get trailers out of people's yards and have them there.
And make up against pre-nakers.
Yeah, well, we do it for the slips.
Yeah.
So, you know, whatever. I'm not looking for a discount, I'm just saying, charge the others more. And Ocean Avenue looks good, but I don't know if they raised up all the manholes and everything. There seems to be pretty bumpy, it's bumpy, there's a lot of them that are real low.
We had to purchase, we're waiting for the equipment to come in to raise the manholes up to the level of the road.
Yeah, so that's what it was, yes, I noticed that, so. Usually you do that when you're doing the job. I didn't know why that wasn't done, but it looks really nice.
Do the job.
Did they put more handicap spots up there?
Yes, everything is in compliance now with Title 39.
So that's, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I would close the public portion and I'd entertain a motion for adjournment from the council.
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Anambeal? Seconded by Councilmember Condos, roll call.
Councilmember Anambeal?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Will?
Yes.